All right. Welcome back. So I guess we will now move into the work session portion of the agenda. And I believe that starts with Ms. Cook to talk about a couple of items, an out-of-country trip and some textbook adoptions.
Mr. President, members of the board, the out-of-country trip is being directed by Ms. Soff and Ms. Grace at the high school. And this trip is for June of 2022. And it is a trip to Italy as they're preparing all in advance. So they would appreciate that you consider a trip through Explorica Company to Italy in June of 2022 from the sixth through the nineteenth.
What years would these be today of the students that would be able to participate?
Well, we have the class, it would be our freshmen and sophomores today.
Got it. Okay.
For the 2022. And then any of our seventh and eighth graders who rise up.
Got it.
So seven through ten.
Okay.
All right.
Questions?
My next item is very unique. Not come to you this before and probably hope to never come back again. I have a textbook adoption here in December. And the reason I have a textbook adoption in December as opposed to when we typically do this in May or June is because we had run two courses in our program of studies in music theory. Any student who goes into college as a music major should leave high school with a music theory course. We've not been able to run the music theory course in the last few years because we've not had enough students sign up for it. So this year we had students who signed up for an AP music theory course and students who signed up for the semester music theory course. We didn't have enough to run either, but the importance of students who are going to be a music major having music theory, we talked to those kids and combined them. So we've got enough kids to run the semester one half-credit theory course. We have all the three of those students who have asked to continue their music theory study into semester two with the AP credit. That course requires an AP-sponsored textbook, so a college board textbook. So that is the request for this evening is that AP music theory course textbook. This is a request that is under $2,000. It does fit within my textbook budget for this year and it would allow those students to be able to continue their studies and gain AP information to be able to take the AP test in the spring, which is going to prepare them for college theory course. I hope that makes sense in this very strange situation that we don't typically have here, but I would like to be able to accommodate those.
So in the next few years, we can rely on this book then if we ever kind of?
It is a six-year adoption.
Okay.
So depending on what our numbers are over the next six years, that six-year adoption would include the hard copy tax. The first year would include workbooks because we did not charge families on piece for that workbook. So I've negotiated with the company to give us enough workbooks to get us through this year for free. And then in subsequent years, that would be a fee item as all of our workbooks are. So the cost that is under $2,000 would include a hard copy tax, a six-year online access for the textbook so students can access it electronically from home as well as work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next, another item, Ms. Robson.
Gentlemen, how are you this evening? So the first one I would like to talk about is the Constellation contract. I don't know if you can see it in front of you. So I've been doing some analytics around our energy, our gas and electric consumption. One thing that I noticed is on our gas, it's a variable rate right now, which, you know, we're hedging more or less. So are we getting good deals from a variable perspective? Some months we are, some months we're not. And the trend shows that the months that we utilize a lot of gas, our rates are going up. So we went ahead and I'd like to propose blocking end to a contract to August 2021. So what I would like to do is get all of our contracts to end at the same time. If we did August 2021, then all of our contracts would be aligned. So this would be, was it one year and seven months? It would be a fixed rate. And based on our historic 12-month data, we would save about $16,000, about $17,000. Okay? Now, again, this is a market we're talking about, so you're gonna have ebbs and flows. So, but that's kind of where we're at if we were to go in. And this is just gas. On the electric side, we're working on that. It's gonna be a process, but hopefully we can, you know, get some leads there. The next one, any questions on that? Okay. The next one is Airmark contract. We supply our custodians, I'm sorry, not our custodians, but our transportation and our maintenance and grounds crew uniforms for the union contract. We are with Centas currently proposing to go to Airmark. We're gonna save 50% over three years. Sorry, 50% each year, which equates to about $2,200 per year over three years. So we actually had a company get fitted today if we go for with it. It's a nice product, so. And the last one, this is gonna be for the next board meeting, we're proposing a contract for our Dyson Crew, which is our elevator companies. Mr. Stuckey, I'm sure you'll like this. So right now, we just have a service, an annual service where they come in bi-annually and they grease and do all the maintenance for our elevators. They inspect them. If we move to a gold plan, it's gonna save us about $2,900 based on historical numbers because that covers all of our parts and labor for the timeframe of six in the morning till two in the afternoon. So usually they go like eight before, but I propose them to move it up because of our crazy times here at school. So with that being said, our elevator's getting older. We're gonna be putting more money into them. So even though it's probably $2,300 per year, I would say that's on the low end. So yes, we're gonna pay more upfront, but in the end, we're gonna see a cost benefit.
You could just put a ladder in there so I could climb out.
Absolutely. There is a hole up top. Just find out.
I can't get down.
Yeah, I wanna.
All right. Any questions on that? All right, thank you.
Now to item 4.7, discussion around our 2020 board meeting dates and then our 2021 organizational meeting.
So you have an attachment which shows the proposed 2020 board meeting dates, one being a regular meeting here at the library and the triangle would be, if it's needed, a second session at the board office. We base this around the board meeting group center meetings because we have two members that will be on that board.
To move it off of the day that conflicts.
Do they meet once a?
Once a month. On Thursdays.
So we're proposing moving to Wednesdays. For the upcoming year.
And then the organizational meeting for 2021 will be January 6th. This year it's January 7th.
Any questions about the calendar? Okay. Committee reports, I believe we have the safety committee report?
Yes. All right, thank you. So you, Jacob, you were there at the meeting, but for everybody else in the room that was not, so we had nine points at our safety committee meeting. We talked about our theoretical scenarios and training that were going in each of the buildings. So we light out the timeframes of what we're doing in each building. Sergeant Don's been real proactive in that full-scale exercise. We're really well, we did it in October, the emergency medical, emergency management gave us a really good rating on that. So everything went really well. We did apply for a BWC grant, which we got $37,000 for. So that's gonna put in a repeater that will tie us to five points, which is really good. We talked about building safety drills, that the principals are driving that. We just did an update, we do a bi-annual update in Ohio, we just did that. So we're solid on that. We got all of our safety plans taken care of as well, so they're all agreed. Fire pool station update, we, after the meeting, next day I called our security system, A1 fire system, they're gonna start doing a study to see how much it would cost and what the implications would be if we were to remove our pool stations. It's just not easy, it's easy coming in and just pulling.
What's a fire pool station? Like the actual physical?
Yeah, yeah, those pool stations.
Yeah, I was outdated at this point. They're really only false alarms.
Yeah, absolutely. So.
And that's not a, the fire department doesn't think that's like a?
They.
As long as they blessed it, I guess that's how.
And that, that's what it comes down to. I think it's all, it's some work on their end.
Okay.
More cost on ours, but we're gonna find out exactly how much it is and what it's gonna take. We applied for another grant, it's $26,000 grant, it's a once-a-year grant, so we applied for that, hopefully we get that and we'll be able to utilize that in the safety committee to determine what we want to do with it. Is it, you know, window coverings or something like that? We're gonna come up with a methodology to get that taken care of and spent. Keys in the junior high area, I have went ahead and purchased keys to replace the ones that were lost. So I've been working with Fargo Smith to get her the keys that she needs. We were gonna put key cards in it, but it was just, it's like $5,000 per area, it just doesn't seem feasible for us. Keys are only a couple hundred dollars for twelve. So we're just gonna go that path. Bus evacuation drills, Michelle Palmer and I are gonna come up with some sort of video that if a person, if a student does not ride a bus, that they're gonna be able to watch this video during, you know, when they first come to school to make sure that they understand how to evacuate a bus. And that's it. Any questions?
The only question I had is within the, when we go through the year and we have either drills or what have you, and then we actually get feedback from the fire department, police department, and maybe this is a question more for Scott, not the police guy, I don't know. Do we publish that anywhere? Because I, to me, that's a nice thing to say to the community that we do look at safety. It sounds like we got a good rating on the last one. I mean, that to me, without getting into detail about, you know, the operations and the mechanics of it, more along the lines of we do conduct these, we actually perform well. Does that go anywhere or not really?
So we, and stop me if I'm wrong here, but we don't publish, we don't publish it anywhere, but it is available by request.
Okay. Just wondering.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly can.
Yeah, it's kinda happened somewhere.
Yeah.
We did well and, you know, I don't know.
And we have all, we have it all available, we just published it to the state and?
Yeah, yeah, it gets reported to the state.
You're just, it's more about just highlighting that this work is going on.
I think that's.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we could definitely look into that and be sure there's a place on the website we can put in, take it up there and.
Yeah, whenever the results come out, we'll be reporting, send it my way.
Okay.
We'll get that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anything, any other business with 4.10? Okay, we'll move to Ms. Floyd with the treasures section.
Thank you. From tonight, you have the November 2019 financials. Now, for not to spray your ear, please ask me any questions, just some highlights from November. We received in $1.5 million in revenue. Typically, we receive around four to five million a month, but we're obviously now receiving with tax advances. I have kind of explained that this is the normal timeframe where we don't. But we still had our normal level of expenditures, so we had just over $4.5 million in expenditures. So over the next few months, we'll be utilizing our cash reserves until those advances start. As an example, we had $15.7 million when we ended October and we're at $12.8 million ending in November and you'll continue to see that go down. One of the things that the board had asked me was stations for the student meal accounts and how we're doing with that. Today, we received $155 towards those meal balances. We've had a high in charges of $375 in the year. We currently run about $200. So we're not gonna do any spendings until the end of the year because she does do collection efforts and then once the year happens, we'll take care of those balances with money and then that money will just continue on if it's in a cash fund. Like I said before, last month, we will start receiving tax advances coming in in late January to early February. And then currently, all of our expenditures are right in line with our cash flows of where we would expect to be right now. We're running under in a couple areas, which is good. And then the areas that we are still running over in, art we're expecting to be over because we're pump-heavy and they're starting to close in. So we're coming back in estimates. So, sorry to my voice, doesn't like to carry out with everything. I also have 5.2 is on the athletic boosters donation of $2,031.28 to the boys team program, tennis programs, for a speaker system at the tennis courts.
It's okay, just. Questions? So item 5.3 is the approval of items 5.1 and 5.2. So is there a motion to? After second?
Yes.
Second? Okay, discussion, questions?
Just, just one, it's on the budget, the actual fiscal year. Do we, there were a couple, it's like principal payments as well on items?
Yes, we have a principal payment. We'll actually have another one next month as well for net payments.
Okay, this is just the normal, it only happens annually versus?
No, it happens in December, usually December, but sometimes we pay them in November at the end because they're due December 2nd and then we also have large payments in June.
Yeah, it's. Okay, I'm with you now. Okay, thank you. That was it.
Any other questions, Bobby, Stuckey?
I have to stay.
And Flagey?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
And then my other items are a donation of two cellos from the Springer Orchestra Association valued at $1,200. Also, a donation of coffee paper from Equipment Investments valued at $500. And then 5.6 is the approval of those two donations.
Okay. Okay. Both back, how was the concert? Okay. So item 5.6 is the approval of 5.4 and 5.5. Is there a motion to approve? So, second. Any discussion or questions? I think.
Law motion, Dave second.
Questions?
Stuckey?
Yes.
Bad?
Yes.
Flagey?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move now to our interim superintendent's report. Tessa.
Yes, good evening, members of the board. Mr. President, I'd like to present to you the December personnel report, 6.1.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve item 6.1?
Second.
Discussion or questions?
I did have a quick question. I noticed two bus drivers on here, which was a huge concern based off of past board meetings. Are we, how are we doing with that overall?
Very good. In February, I believe, Ms. Palmer and Rob are going to present kind of a state of transportation to the board, but we will have four retirements this year at the end of the school year. The one leave of absence is a surgery, so he'll be back, but the other one is a true resignation. So we are, if posted, we don't have any.
Candidates, any applicants. Did our increase in pay help at all?
It wasn't anything pay-related on the deal.
But like, didn't, we increased a little bit ago, did it?
On sub-cost per sub-bus drivers, we did, but it's just a, it's just a workforce shortage and then.
And we're still behind neighboring districts on pay. And with a bus driver, your employment pool is typically in our geographic area because of the three-hour route they go home, they make that.
Right.
So you're, a lot of people aren't gonna travel far to do that to the job.
And you're saying even in the, our neighboring districts that are paying a little bit more, they're also having, 'cause I've heard the same thing from many different districts. Okay, okay. That was just, that thing that jumped out at me when I was reviewing this ahead of time is the bus drivers. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Stuckey?
Yes.
Bad?
Yes.
Flagey?
Yes.
Yes.
Item 6.2.
6.2 is the athletic report for all of the member.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion or questions?
Okay, Stuckey?
I have to stay.
Yes.
Flagey?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I guess we move into item, or the assistant superintendent of instruction for items 7.1 and 7.2.
For 7.1, Mr. President, members of the board, I'm seeking approval of the trip to Italy in June of 2022 through Explorica.
And 7.2, we'll do it together.
And 7.2, the textbook adoption and approval for the AP music theory course that is called Total Tonal Harmony, eighth edition by McGraw-Hill.
7.3 is the approval of items 7.1 to 7.2. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Questions, discussion?
Stuckey?
Yes.
Bad?
Yes.
Flagey?
Yes.
Yes.
Moving now to the director of facilities.
Mr. President and members of the board, I'd like to ask your consideration for approval of the contract for Constellation for our gas energy usage and also the approval for the contract for Airmark, which is our uniform.
8.3 seeks the approval of items 8.1 and 8.2. Is there a motion to approve? Discussion or questions?
For the uniforms, is that something we've always, we've always provided, that's for maintenance and?
Yep, transportation, yep. That always have as part of the contract. We don't have a siphon or anything, it's just great, you know, uniforms. So we've, I think over the past four years, three or four years, we've had Centas, Airmark, we've got 50% out of it.
Good job, okay. Okay, I just, I, now that, once I was reviewing it, I realized, I'm like, I do always see them in the same clothes, I just hadn't realized that that was something.
Yep.
Okay, great.
Okay.
I guess we need to, yeah, that's what we need to vote on. Get a little out of myself.
Sorry, Stuckey?
Yes.
Yes.
Flagey?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, into the board member reports, comments, questions, announcements and future considerations. So we have two items that require action this evening. Just to provide a little bit of context on these before the vote. I guess we were faced with some large insurance increases for the upcoming calendar year and through a lot of good work with the FIT team that involved members of the administration and members of both unions and members of the board, that we were able to really, I think, make some positive changes in terms of our insurance to help mitigate the cost of those, those increases. And as a result of that, the board decided to also look at our salaries because we had our current contract with the SEA. It was a three-year contract, the first two years were locked in, the increases were locked in, but the third was open for negotiation, which would be the 2021 school year. And the board made a decision to, to go ahead and take care of that increase now in conjunction with the changes that were happening with the insurance. And so, you know, as we get into item 9.2 and 9.1 that are really related to that increase, the salary portion of that increase, it's important to note that these were captured in the five-year forecast that we reviewed at the end of October, approved at the end of October. And so these amounts are not incremental to that five-year forecast. They are sort of in line and were expected during the presentation Ms. Floyd gave at that time. So just wanted to provide a little bit of context about why we're, we're going ahead and doing this, this now for the 2021 school year. So with that said, item 9.1 seeks the approval of the 2.75% salary increase for our exempt staff, again, for the 2021 school year. So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll say, discussion, questions?
My only comment would be just appreciating the teamwork that it took truly across the board to come up with this creative approach. So I think that that, that was helpful in helping everybody understand on staff what this would look like was having people on their team that were part of the decision-making. So I just appreciate that approach.
Absolutely.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Bad?
Yes.
Flagey?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then item 9.2 is the approval of a memorandum, understanding between the Springer Board of Education and the Springer Education Association. Is there, again, the changes reflected in here to finish up the last year of that contract with the 2.75% increase? Is there a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Discussion, questions?
Stuckey?
Yes.
Bad?
Yes.
Flagey?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll go down to announcements, future considerations, as bad.
Well, I just came from the sixth grade choir presentation and it was neat to see so many little voices come together and present what they did. I don't know their choir teacher there very well at all, but it was clear that she really had a great connection with the students and just simple explanations to those of us in the audience of what was happening. So it's just neat to see the arts presented at that level for even the students that might not do anything more with that, but clearly she's doing an amazing job with that. That's all I have tonight.
Wanted to say thank you to the junior high kids for coming in the presentation from Mrs. Thorberry, Ms. Thorberry and Mr. Franks. And we, we had the athletic Hall of Fame introduction, or the vote on it, and it's been made public. They've been notified, there were three going in next year. And there was one, Olivia Schrutsman, that was, she was deployed last year, so she's gonna be inducted this year. Maverick Morgan, who played basketball here, went on to college. Ashley Wentz, who was in volleyball. Congratulations.
Yeah, just echo what Ms. Bad said, thanks to the FIT team. You know, I think I didn't participate this year, but you know, as an outside observer, very impressed with all the work that got accomplished and it really did help everybody. I think this was a great illustration, collaboration between board and, you know, the everyone that participated, quite frankly, and it really helped us, you know, when we were in a bind due to the rising insurance costs. That was certainly positive and, you know, I think we're gonna continue to work through that group with a lot of things. So excited for the, for the outcome that we were finally able to work that tonight. So well done there. And then I thank you again to the junior high kids as well as Ms. Thorberry and Mr. Franks for coming in. And I think it goes without saying that in this day and age, that fake news and unreliable sources are a pretty common currency. So it's, you know, for all the technology that's out there these days, I think our jobs within the district are to really teach students how to utilize it, leverage it, you know, responsibly and not just believe everything you read on the internet. So, you know, that was a great, timely conversation presentation and I was really glad to see that we are doing that. That's fantastic. The younger, the better. So thanks to all that participated in that.
Mr. Flagey, I forgot one. Is that, there were three new ones and then Olivia was from last year. Shannon Thomas, female basketball player, is also going to be inducted to the Hall of Fame.
Thank you. Yeah, I would, I guess just reiterate some of the things that the other board members have shared, appreciate the junior high presentation and as Mr. Franks pointed out, it's extremely timely content given today's day and age. And so it's great to see that we're, we're helping to instill some of those, those skills in our students at a young age. But also I think that they all be, I think, getting some donations. But also thank that the, all the, I think we had some donations that we approved, right, for the cellos and speaker system. Yes, also thank you to all the people that, um, that donated to the district. And again, you know, I did have the, the pleasure of serving on the FIT team, uh, this past year and, and I can say that it was a very collaborative environment and really appreciate the time. It was a lot of time, uh, that the team members put in, uh, to really sort of come together and evaluate some of the different options. And, and they were all very positive, constructive conversations and, and hope that, so we can continue that strong collaboration as we go forward. So that's all I had, is there anything else? Okay, then we'll move to item 10.1, adjournment. Is there a motion to approve?
So. Second.
Stukey?
Yes.
Bab? Yes, Flagey?
Yes.
Yes.
We're adjourned, thank you.